Good afternoon. Thank you all for joining the July meeting of the Finance Committee of the City Council for Winston-Salem. We hope everyone had a happy and safe Fourth of July. And it's tough getting back in the swing. But we are here, and we appreciate your being with us. Without objection, we will take the consent items first. Councilmember Light is requesting C four and C ten. Are there any other items that anyone would like to have pulled? If not, what's the pleasure of the committee? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, that carries unanimously. Going now to consent item number four.
Resolution approving an amendment to an agreement for housing production at Drayton Pines with the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem and execution of a release deed and declaration of covenant pertaining thereto.
Councilmember Light, you pulled this one?
Yeah, I was wondering if Mr. Page could just explain something to me. First of all, what is a single asset or single purpose entity which the authority is not?
Right now, the Housing Authority has multiple properties. So being a single asset entity means that they would just have control of that one property. So what they're going to do is convert that, the ownership for Drake Pines into a single entity such that the only property that would be controlled or secured by it would be Drake Pines.
But how are they going to do that? Are they going to sell it? Or what?
They're going to create a new entity that they will in essence control that entity.
Oh, so...
But it will still be an entity of the Housing Authority.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Councilmember Burke?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, may I ask, Councilmember, the question I need to ask, I see someone is here from the Housing Authority. I guess Mayor Jones, when he was working with the city, he can understand as well as I can, it was Mayor Wayne A. Corpin who started our first housing committee that made up of citizens. Mr. Egan was chairman of that committee. Drakeon Pines was developed and named after Reverend Drayton, who had been a minister, worked as State Human Relations Commission Chairman of that commission, and also at the very active in the city of Winston-Salem. And I guess my concern, and the concern of some of the rest of us, would be about the name of that facility. Madam, can she address some others?
Yes, is there someone here from the Housing? If you would, just come up to the podium and please give us your name and address for the records. We thank you.
Hi, I'm Katrina Redman, 500 West Fourth Street, 27101. In regards to Drakeon Pines, it will retain its name. As a matter of fact, the nonprofit entity will also carry the same name.
Right, it's in the minutes for us to know, some may, and I didn't say a thing about not being here anymore, but it's a possibility when some move from this council, then we need to make it clear that that name will remain.
Certainly.
Alright, again, that's one of our first housing projects. It looks good. The park beside it looks good, and it's nice. Thank you.
Okay, do you have a question? With the, what is it called? Single purpose entity, is there any downside? Is that like a limited liability corporation? I see that it's sheltered from other properties that are owned and managed by the Housing Authority. Any downside to the city for that particular?
We will still be able to control the property as long as they go on and get the property developed. Once, once they have begun construction, and now they're supposed to do, we lose that control, I believe. I'm going to look back to Mayor Dina, who sort of been working with them. But my understanding is that we will still have the control of the property until such time that they complete construction. The downside would be, of course, if they didn't complete construction, but that's what would actually have the property returned to us, is what I'm saying.
That's correct. Once, once construction was completed, a certificate of completion was to have been filed, and our, our ability to force the property to revert to us, which was in the original documents, would disappear. So Drakeon Pines, or the Housing Authority, would be free to convey that property to another entity. The purpose of the single purpose entity is simply to give the lender who's going to be providing the funding for the rehabilitation of Drakeon Pines, some security that they will be able to recoup loan monies that they are providing. So it's, it's a way of insulating the lender, as I understand it. However, it is in the city's interest insofar as this will provide the necessary funding for the development to be rehabilitated.
But back to Councilmember Burke's question.
Yes.
If they are insulated, can, can they, the lender, change the name at some point?
No, the only thing that we are proposing to change is to eliminate the restriction on transfer of the property, and some other restrictions on fencing. So everything else from the original agreement will remain the same, and as the Housing Authority has indicated, the name Drakeon Pines will remain the same as well. And that is something that we can incorporate into our amendment to the agreement, if that is the desire of council.
Yes, madam, because I was glad when they changed Burke Village from the private folks bought that piece of property and took the name off. But Drakeon Pines is, is well managed, it's nice, it's livable, it's right around Friendship Baptist Church, and you have people coming and going, it's right there at the university. And the money that we have invested with the housing from University of Northwest Boulevard with our plan, what's going, we're going to tie right into town, it's going to be really... And I just wanted to make sure, madam, you come up with the very good, because if, if it's not written in there clearly, that name will be changed. So whenever we get that little bit of information together, I like to see the city manager, we need to see, Mr. Page, we need to see it written, so we can clearly understand that. Madam, if that's alright?
I think we're asking that that become a condition of, of the financing.
We will certainly put that into the amendment to the agreement.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, that carries unanimously with the condition. Thank you. Consent item number ten.
Resolution approving the commissioning of a centennial art piece and a public art fundraising campaign.
I think this is very exciting, and I'd just like to hear a report, so it'll be, you know, spread upon the minutes.
And we have the gentleman there that can make the report.
Evan, would you tell us a little bit more about what's going on?
Sure, I certainly can. And good afternoon, Chairman Marshall, Mayor, and members of the committee. What you have before you is kind of a continuation of a conversation that was started a while back, where we kind of began the visioning process for the centennial year celebration. We had discussed, including a piece of public art, kind of wrapping that into the celebration. So the item before you sort of outlines a process that we would use to solicit submissions for a centennial art piece from local artists. It's a very open process that we've outlined. We're looking for submissions from everyone. The submissions that, I guess, in terms of the process that we'd use to kind of triage those submissions and review them, when they are submitted, a group of, a group of folks will kind of do the preliminary evaluation on that, those submissions, and submit three finalists to the mayor and city council for review, and kind of final selection. The site locations that have been proposed for this piece are basically three prominent locations in the downtown area. What we've proposed is either citing this piece, the eventual winner at Corpin Plaza, Winston Square Park, or Grace Court is the, kind of the site that we ultimately select. And the sum that the artist will receive to receive, to, I guess, realize his or her work is thirty thousand dollars, and it is anticipated that the unveiling of that piece will occur no later than the, I guess, December first of this year. So that kind of gives you an overview of what we're looking to achieve with this item.
My question about the, the committee, the selection committee, that, how are they going to be chosen? Because that's going to be critical.
Sure.
And certainly, I think they ought to be artists or people who know what they're talking about when they're talking about art.
Right. Well, what, what we envision is having a group of, I guess what you could call professional artists and some designated from council as well, at your discretion, to kind of review and be able to, to give you feedback on those technical aspects of the piece. Will it be suitable for, for public display? Will it be safe? Will it be sound? Will it be able to last for years and years? So that, does that answer your, your question?
But certainly, I mean, we, we don't need to have someone like me making that decision. We do need to have people who are very aware of art and of installation and that sort of thing. So, thank you very much.
Certainly.
Okay.
And I would just take exception. I think you would be great. Because as this is designed, it is not limited to professional artists.
Right.
And I think one of the things that comes to my mind very quickly is the Center for Exceptional Children. A large part of their curriculum is art, and some of the things that I've seen coming from that population is unbelievably good.
Oh, yeah.
And we can all appreciate, and to be honest, would not want that to be somewhat judged by professionals. I think art hits an emotional connection with you that doesn't necessarily require an educated expertise. So I'm delighted. And also would like to call attention to that one of the parameters, the criteria is that it should recognize the contributions that women have made to the city of Winston-Salem. So, behalf of that population, and Councilmember Taylor, who is always considerate to note that minority and women business owners should be recognized, so we thank you.
Don't forget to initiate a minority and women.
Councilmember Burke. So, alright, thank you. What's the wish of the committee on that one?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed, carries unanimously. Evan, thank you for your work. We will return now to the general agenda with item number one.
Resolution authorizing the city to participate in certain public infrastructure improvements for the Hilltop House South project in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, Mr. Page?
Good afternoon again. This time is a request from the developers of Hilltop House South.
That was not working.
That was not working?
It never works.
Got it.
From Hilltop South, Hilltop House South Development, which would be at the intersection of Brookstown Avenue, Factory Road, and the Strollway. So sort of orient you, this is the Strollway running along the east side of the building, Brookstown along the north side, and Factory Road. So it's down on Old Salem, adjacent to the, the visitor's center, what used to be the old Darryl's Restaurant down on Brookstown, across the street from One Tower Place, I think it's called, as well as Hilltop North Apartments. This project would be for the development of a sixty-five unit apartment building at 126 Brookstown Avenue, about a forty-seven thousand square foot apartment complex, about a five-story project. The developers asking for assistance doing public infrastructure, things such as sidewalks, landscape, pedestrian lighting, retention walls associated with the development of the project. Project is in the Central Business District and would qualify for assistance, as some of the other projects we've done within the Central Business District, to provide infrastructure assistance for these similar type projects. The total assistance represents about forty-five percent of the net new taxes that be generated by the project over that five-year period, being that the project currently has a value of about ninety, nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. The new estimated tax value is about six point two million dollars. So it's going to generate about twenty-eight thousand, three hundred per year in taxes. We'd be providing incentives of thirteen thousand per year. Happy to answer any questions you may have. The developers are here, can answer any questions you may have about the project as well. And I'll also just show a few other renderings. Again, from the same vantage point of Brookstown Avenue, the Strollway running along the east side of the building, and Factory Road to the west side. And if you're familiar with the project, that they've already done adjacent to the old hotel, I think you have a very similar view of the side of the building there, so very similar type design. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Lots of things going on. Okay. You want to? We'll start with Derwin, and just, and DeeDee, it's good to have you with us. That's right.
My question is, again, on the, the rent rates, do they fall in the same category as the pre, as the other part of the project itself, or where we on?
Have to get the developers up here.
And if you would, sir, just come up and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Ryan, I live at 100 Sutter's Place Court, Winston-Salem, 27104. I think the question was, the rents are similar to the existing facilities we have, was that the question? Yes, they are.
Do you have a, what that is currently, or are you still working that out?
We're still working it out. We have a gross rent figure that we need to have for the building to make it financially feasible, but we have not gone in and priced individual units yet. Our exist, these will be all one-bedroom apartments. Our existing one-bedroom apartments start at five hundred and fifty dollars a month and go to eight hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Square foot?
Six hundred. It varies from some of them. We, we have kind of two sections. One is remodeled section, one is new construction on the present facility.
Okay, I, it'd be good, I don't know if you all could get that by Monday, but to have some firmer sense of what those numbers could possibly be. I know there's a lot of factors that come into deciding what those are, but to get a good range, that's something I'm always interested in when we have these projects that we put money in to see what those rates will be.
Okay.
Thank you. My question, I guess, to our plant development team, the pictures, they're good pictures, but I, you know, for one, okay, I'm from Winston, I know where the old Brookstown, I know what the hotel is, and Meridian and all of that, but this doesn't really kind of help me out. I need to know, like, what corner is this, you know?
If you kind of start with Meridian, working back toward where we are today, it's the Meridian, and then your Brookstown end is right next to that. That's the lower building. The next to Brookstown is a lower building that has basically condominium office buildings in it, and that's where the tourist center is. And then there's a, a street that's actually been closed called Factory Road, that's kind of gun, working toward our side of the, of the Brookstown. And the next is a beat-up old warehouse with a, the roof is falling in literally, and it's got some graffiti on the side of it, and that's right beside the Strollway.
Okay.
And then you have the Strollway, and there's a bridge there, if you might remember that, on Brookstown.
Yeah.
Attorney's Office is the next one over.
So are these units being, did you do the units already, like, behind the hotel, right there at the Meridian? You did those units as well?
No, ma'am, we did not.
No? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
I was just going to say, I, I know where it's located, and when I look at this particular project, I believe I said before, when people are brave enough, with the economy like it is today, that if you want to provide some housing, mine is some of the, Councilmember Montgomery, I would be interested in the range, and also, I asked also about how many apartments we still, we have any vacant, if people really use them. If we want downtown to be used, we're going to have to put people there who can afford to stay downtown, and investments we have made for them to stay, then we're going to have to have people who will use our downtown. And I think when you can see some type of development going on, it sort of motivates the citizens that we're, we're doing alright, you're doing pretty good. People providing jobs and housing, and so it sort of gives them a different self-esteem feeling about the city. That's all I want to say.
Okay, and this is in your ward?
This is in my ward, in fact, right around the corner from my house. There are a couple of things about this that I think are very exciting. First of all, you can't see it so much from the pictures provided, but the fact is that this, the roof line and everything, the metal roof, reflects what you have just down the street already there. So I'm, I, I really like that, that aspect of it. And I am told that the Hilltop North, North is virtually full. Is that?
We're over ninety-five percent occupied.
Yeah, so, so there seems to be quite a demand for, it's nice to see young folks wandering around, most of us are old bogies now.
I think the mayor's going to contradict that.
What I was going to say. Just to piggyback in on, I, I think the, the developer did such a sensitive reworking of the north project there. Amazing the way you took the old hotel and then added a new to it there. But the thing that I like about it is it's located right beside the Strollway, which creates an activity generator and creates, you know, presence right on the Strollway that creates hopefully more safety kind of feel to it as well. So I think it's, it's great to create enough critical mass in this particular area there.
Next, we need a grocery store.
There you go. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep my comments brief, and I did just want to add that, you know, as the city grows and develops, I think we all believe that it's important that our downtown continues to grow and continues to develop. Councilmember Montgomery and Councilmember Burke's thoughts are shared by myself. I think, I do not have a vote on this committee, but I will have one on Monday. It'd be very important to me to get the numbers. I think as downtown grows and expands, we want to have apartments, we want to invite people downtown, but it's important to me to know that not just our, our upper middle class or our affluent are able to live downtown. I'm not saying that that's the case, but we still have to continue to be forward-thinking. So as we continue to develop, let's make sure that downtown continues to be for everyone, from the person who doesn't have a lot of dollars in their pocket to the person who has the most. Downtown is for everybody. So if we keep that in mind, Madam Chair, as we move forward, and that information will be important for me when it's time to vote on Monday, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, are you the developer on the other hilltop?
Yes, my boss is.
Okay. So you can take credit or blame for it. That would be Mr. Baker, and we appreciate that. What are the rental rates on that particular, and do you have a square, per square foot cost on that? Can you give us some idea as we?
Yeah, the, the lowest price we have is five hundred and fifty dollars a month. But these are one-bedrooms, we're going to build all one-bedrooms in this particular building we're talking about. Our highest is eight hundred and fifty dollars a month.
And that's for two bedrooms?
That's for one bedroom.
For one bedroom?
Right. Now, I could give you the entire spiel, but parking is free and all that sort of thing.
Okay. Alright, but you, you will have a more definitive answer?
Yes.
To staff, so we can have it before Monday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or comments on that? If not, what's the pleasure?
Move approval.
Second. Alright, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for being here. Alright, item number two.
Presentation from the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership regarding a proposed business improvement district.
Okay, I think, does everyone have a, a leave behind, a handout? Finn, thank you. Alright. And with us today, we have the Chair of the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, Mark Dunagan, and he would like to make a presentation today. And I believe, and I'll ask the city manager, that at the end of the presentation, the desired outcome is for committee and additional council members to give some feedback to staff for next step?
That, that's correct.
Is that what we need to be listening for? Okay, with that, Mark, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you.
And if you would, give us your name and address for the...
Thank you. I'm Mark Dunagan. I'm at 1260 Yorkshire Road, 27106. And I am the Chairman of the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership. Before I get started, I'd like to acknowledge two other folks in the room with us today, Ralph Womble, Michael Suggs, who have been instrumental in this effort up to now, Michael Tyten, but thank you both for your, your help with this so far. I'm here this afternoon to introduce the concept of a business improvement district fee, or a bid. And I think before we get started, it's important to, to do two things. First and foremost, is to identify and define what a bid is. A bid is essentially a district of town, and in this case, it would be downtown Winston-Salem, the central core area, which we'll define in a minute. Stakeholders within that district are assessed on their property value. That assessment, that, that those dollars are then aggregated and used to fund projects and initiatives within the district. So the district is self-contained, the revenues that are generated are used in that district. The second thing that I, that I'd like to point out, and really acknowledge before we get started, is the business improvement district that we're going to present is essentially the next step in what has been a decade-long effort by city council, by downtown stakeholders, and frankly, by the community at large, to really increase the awareness of our downtown, to make it a place that people want to invest, make it a place people want to live, they want to work, and they ultimately want to come and play. So this is really the next step, an opportunity for us to bring more parties to the table in that effort. So if you, if you go to your packet, you'll see here on the page, it looks like this. Why now? Why is this the right time for a business improvement district in downtown Winston-Salem? Ultimately, the density of the usership in downtown Winston-Salem has grown dramatically in the last six years alone, much less the last decade. You'll see in the bottom left-hand corner of this slide that the density of usership in downtown during the lunch hour has increased by a hundred percent. That's 2006 to 2011, so we're, we're greater than that now. During the dinner hours, it's increased over three hundred and twenty percent in the last six years. So that's a dramatic increase in a very short amount of time. So what that means to us at the downtown partnership is, we're growing up. That means it's working. All of the efforts that we've all had over the last decade are really starting to come together and make this thing spin. So this business improvement district is an opportunity for us to bring more parties to the table, more investment into downtown, and then to use that investment to plow right back in to what we've been doing for the last decade. So it's really a great opportunity for us. You've probably heard Jason, as he, as he has talked about this over the last few years, talk about taking the training wheels off. Well, this is an opportunity for us to take the training wheels off and deal with the bigger city issues that come along with all the benefits of being a bigger and more vibrant city. So what, what do we get? What, what's the value that this business improvement district is going to bring? We've identified five categories, and I'll go into them in a little bit of detail, but those five categories are increased safety and security downtown, a cleaner environment, stronger marketing and promotional efforts in our downtown, accelerated development, and enhanced physical appearance. Before I go into that in a lot of detail as to what those are, you'll see at the bottom of this page, the allocation of how those revenues will be expended in this program that we're proposing. You'll see thirty-eight percent each for increased safety, security, and cleaner environment, ten percent each for stronger marketing and promotional efforts, and accelerated development, and then four percent for an enhanced physical appearance. So let me, let me talk just for a few minutes about some of the services that would be included in each of those categories. First is the improved safety and security, and this would be done by what we call safety ambassadors. And the safety ambassadors would be full-time, they would be contracted from a private entity that would be competitively bid by the oversight committee that, that oversaw the bid. They would be cross-trained, so they would not only be looking at safety and security, but they would also be the ones that would be looking at cleanliness and so forth downtown. But they would serve as the eyes and ears. They are not trained police officers, so they would work in tandem with the police. They would look for suspicious activity, make sure it was reported expeditiously, that it was followed up on, so they act as an extension, so to speak, of, of those eyes and ears of the police force downtown. Also, public safety awareness campaigns, making sure that people have the ability, they understand what's going on downtown, where things are happening, and that, and that we have the correct amount of safety and precautions in place for those events. Cleaner environment. What we're looking to do here is enhance what we're already doing downtown. So that would include things like pan and brim service on the public areas of downtown sidewalks and streets, graffiti removal, we've all seen graffiti on public walls, streets, sidewalks. This bid committee would be responsible for making sure that, that graffiti was cleaned up, pressure washing, snow and ice removal on the pedestrian ways downtown. Stronger marketing and promotional efforts downtown. What we're really looking to do here is promote downtown as a whole, to give all the entities in downtown the opportunity to promote themselves in aggregate. So that all the small storefront owners, the shops downtown would be able to... So that all the small storefront owners, the shops downtown, would be able to join their, their forces and have a, a more impactful marketing presence as they marketed their, their particular entities downtown. Also, special event support when we have festivals and special events downtown. Accelerated development. What this really comes down to is an aggressive approach to recruitment in our downtown. Really getting out there and providing the data for folks as they're trying to make decisions as, is downtown the right place for them? Is it the right place for their investment? We want to make sure they have that data, and this would include everything from gathering the data to printing and distributing the data, also recruitment trips and so forth. It also includes the downtown plan. How do we proactively plan for what's coming in the future? We've done a great job up to now, and this would increase those efforts moving forward. Enhanced physical appearance. This is everything from the installation of signage, wayfinding signage, to parking facilities, events, entertainment facilities and so forth, to landscaping projects, beautification projects, and then public furnishings, public art, those things that make downtown a great place to come and visit, bring your friends, make it somewhere everybody wants to be. So who else is doing this? Who else has successfully implemented a business improvement district? You'll see here a list of major cities in the United States that have successfully done this. You'll see some of these are fairly large cities, but they've all done this very successfully in the past. If you go to the next page, we've boiled that down to those cities in the United States that, that are peers to Winston-Salem, and that could be a peer through population or a peer through location, but you'll see Roanoke, Virginia, Knoxville, Tennessee, Charlotte, North Carolina, all cities that have implemented business, business improvement districts successfully. And then as you go to the next page, you'll see the list of cities in the state of North Carolina that currently have business improvement districts in place. There's forty-six, not counting Winston-Salem, in the state of North Carolina, and you'll see here that we have a proposed rate, assessment rate of nine cent per hundred dollars of taxable value. That is consistent with the rate charged in Greensboro and just slightly above the rate charged in Durham, which are both peer cities of ours. So we've looked at the taxable value downtown. It's currently estimated at roughly four hundred and seventy million dollars. This nine cent per hundred dollar taxable value assessment would equate to about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in revenue for the business improvement district. In terms of how that relates to our existing taxes, city and county tax rate downtown right now is one point two four six eight per hundred dollars of taxable value, so this would be a point nine, point zero nine cent increase to that. And then we've given you a few examples on the following page of what that means in real-world dollars and cents, in, in the way I like to put it. For those property owners that have a hundred thousand dollars worth of taxable value downtown, that equates to ninety dollars a year. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars equates to two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, and a million dollars in taxable value equates to nine hundred dollars a year. And when you boil that down to what is that per month, what is that per day, it is a tremendous amount of value that we're able to provide for a fairly reasonable assessment. So, last page here, what is the proposed bid district boundary? And you see a, a map here, but essentially, it is Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard on the north, Business Forty on the south, Church Street on the east, and Broad Street on the west. And we have intentionally excluded from this the historic Holly Avenue residential neighborhood and the historic West End residential neighborhood that is in the northwest quadrant, because those are primarily residential areas. Who've we talked to? We, we've, we've been hitting the streets and beating the streets recently. We have support from the Winston-Salem Alliance, formal support from the Alliance, R.J. Reynolds, BB&amp;T, Wells Fargo, IMG College, Commercial Realty Advisors, Wambel Carlisle, the Arts Council, Winston-Salem Business, Inc., and the Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce, to name a few. And we do have public workshops currently scheduled for July seventeenth and eighteenth at Aperture Cinema, so that we can talk to all of the property owners in downtown, make sure their voices are heard and that their concerns are addressed as we move forward with this. So with that, I will open it up to any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Dunagan? Robert?
Your east border, down where we are right now, you've got it at Church Street, which is actually the street in, behind the building. I'm surprised you're not going over a little further east, maybe all the way to Patterson and, as the eastern boundary versus coming in, because that, that's a lot of those areas are being developed.
A large part, I believe, Mr. Clark, what you're speaking of is the innovation quarter?
Well, no, I don't think we get to that. Just the, the area between Church and Patterson, I think a lot of that is, is under fairly intensive development.
I, I would say that this is, this is the boundary as we've contemplated it at this point in time. We are not opposed to looking at new boundary lines.
Anyway, I just, just the first thought, on the boundaries. And secondly, to the staff, I think it would be good, since we've never looked at this lead, to maybe get some information on any legalese we need to know about it, how we set the rate, what authority we have and don't have and things like that.
If council wants us to, this committee wants us to move forward, and we've done some research, but we, we can bring back, we would bring back a preliminary report. State, state law requires, the, requires the city government to create a report, it's very much like an annexation report, shows the services and the benefits, and then there's a public hearing process, which will take several months.
Yeah, because, because the third item was, I think we would want a fairly detailed, not detailed, but some type of budget on, for this account of money, you get the street swept so many times, or policemen down, or the, the clean patrol or whatever. But otherwise, I mean, I think it's a, a good idea. I have two children that live in New York City, so I appreciate the, the issues and challenges that come with, with greater density. And for, there, they pick the trash up every night and things of that sort, if you have to. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, the, the first thing that came to my mind when you started talking about this was, some of the cities I've seen that are on your lists, in fact, and the wonderful things they do with plantings and flowers, so that it looks like you're on Fourth Street, but you're walking through a garden and everything. I hope that this is going to enable us to do that sort of thing.
Absolutely. It's the small things that matter. We, we had a conversation at the partnership recently around the holidays about the moravian stars that are, that are inside of the wreaths that are home, and it's time for those moravian stars to be replaced. They were originally funded by the, by the partnership in part, and right now, we're trying to scramble to find out how can we replace those moravian stars. Well, this would give us an opportunity to go and do that, make sure downtown's a place people want to come for the holidays.
Well, I think we could find some new moravian stars and get rid of the wreaths. My opinion.
And you are entitled.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes, thank you for that nice report. And as you were giving your report, I thought about when you were saying, oh, and what we can do as people in this community. I've said so many times, it's nine of us, a mayor and eight elected officials. We have to have partners, and the kind of investments that we have made through the years, it has not been likely, the kind of money that we spend, federal dollars, city tax dollars, and it's made a difference. I did have a concern about these ambassadors that you would have. Will you explain that a little bit more, just, and I'm sure at the public hearings, have you maybe more explanation about?
Yes. Yeah, well, let me give you an example of what they did in Greensboro, because they have a very similar program in place. They, they produced a work program and said, these are, this is what we want to happen with these ambassadors. These are, this is what we want these people to be able to do. And they came up, again, with similar things, cleanliness, eyes and ears for the police, that sort of thing. They then put that work program into writing and went out to the community and said, we are now accepting bids to perform this work. Bud Services happens to be the company in Greensboro that they selected to do this. But they, they have a hundred-block radius, and they, those ambassadors work in teams of three or four people, and they each have certain areas within that hundred-block area of downtown. So that, that basically becomes their space. They have ownership, so to speak, of, you know, that six or seven-block area, so that, you know, they really start to form a connection, not only with the, with the residents and the business owners in that area, but with the people that come and visit that area a lot of times. So they start to be the folks that people go to and say, how do you get so-and-so, how do you get here from there? You know, that kind of thing. And while they're out there making sure that it's the kind of place that they would want to be in, because it is the kind of place that they're in.
So we'll hear a little bit more about that?
Yes, ma'am.
As we move on. But Madam Chairman, I just want to add that, that I think this is a good point.
Mark, can I just ask, I think, might it be a good example, as we're all looking forward to the National Black Theater Festival, that will be here, what?
July the twenty-ninth.
Yeah. July the twenty-ninth. Had we had a bid already, that would be an excellent opportunity for those ambassadors to take on not only the eyes and ears, the cleanliness and the safety, but the good stewardship of welcoming our out-of-town guests to Winston-Salem, and they could supplement those long hours that our, our police officers do, and perhaps a more genteel, uh-oh, I saw chief coming in. Genteel is probably not a good word, chief. More of an ambassador versus a, a police officer.
Absolutely.
So is that a good example?
That's a, that's a great example of what those people would be cross-trained to do.
Okay, thank you. We'll just go right, Mayor, and then we'll just go right around.
Thank you, Mark. Obviously, I'm in support of the, of the bid. The four hundred and fifty thousand a year, was that a plug number that you were looking for, and therefore, you backed into the nine cents? I'm just a little bit nervous about us being that high coming out of the block compared to Raleigh and Durham, particularly Durham being our closest, kind of, folks there.
Exactly. We looked at peer cities, Mayor. We went to many of the peer cities around North Carolina and Greensboro in particular. And that nine-cent rate was based on an amount of money they backed into the nine cents off of, and we did the same thing. We said, Greensboro has these services, these services seem to make sense to us, and that's how we came up with the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which then backed into the nine cents.
Kind of backed into it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jay?
Mr. Dunagan, I noticed that about thirty-eight percent of the budget would go towards improved safety and security. My question's also geared toward that matter. The clean team, two questions. I believe I know the answer to this, I want to make sure I have it all together in my mind. Will the clean team have the ability to carry a firearm or some weapon of sort, and will they have detaining or arrest capabilities? I know that they're eyes and the ears of the police department, but just how far does that go?
They will not. They will not have detaining capabilities. They would have the same capabilities that any other citizen would have to tell someone to stop, but they wouldn't have any ability to detain somebody. So they, what they would do is report that activity to the police force downtown and let them handle the detaining.
Have a radio.
Mm-hmm, yes, they'll have radios and, and phones and that sort of thing, so it, it would be something that they would have direct connection.
Okay, that, that was one of my favorite episodes of the Andy Griffith Show, by the way, when he did the citizens' arrests. So they, they have the ability to maybe to do a citizens' arrest or, and report that to the police department.
I like it.
One bullet. One bullet.
Is there another episode of Andy that you want to?
No, that's my favorite one. I'll stop there, yeah.
Long as we got your favorite one.
Thank you. I was wanting to know, you said you've been beating the bushes and everything. Do you have any businesses or partners downtown that are already, like, signed on?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd like to, if it's okay, for them to be publicly disclosed to us, you know, just for instance.
Well, I'll give you two, two examples. The first is, is R.J. Reynolds. Don Flo, actually, was, was nice enough to help us make the connection with, with R.J. Reynolds, and when he presented this to them, they had a very strange response. They said, we are a hundred percent in favor of this, but we don't want to stop doing anything we're doing now. We want this to go on top of what we're already doing in the public right of way. We want this to be something that's really going to enhance downtown. So they're in favor. The other's Ben Sutton with IMG Sports, or IMG College. He, he is very much in favor of this, and he sees the value this will bring to Trade Street and all throughout downtown.
Do you anticipate any apprehension from the business community downtown with this?
I, I don't think we'll have a hundred percent on the yes side of the column. I think, I think you're always going to have a few people that view it as a tax, and it's our job to make sure they understand that there's a value that is associated with this tax, and it's not just a tax for taxes' sake. So there are, there's a monetary amount that those folks will not have to pay, that they're already paying now, to clean those areas, the public right of way, from their building to the street, that the bid will then pick up. So there is a value to this for them.
Mr. Garrity, I'd like to see an overlay of all the other districts that are, will be a part of this, such as, we just came off of the entertainment district last week, but I know it's included in this, so I'd like to know, is, are there any others as well? And if they are, I'd like to see a visual of that. I agree with Councilmember Clark about the cost stuff. We need to see that, because, you know, we try to be good stewards, and we just don't want to sign the check, per se, and then it comes in a lot higher than what we've anticipated. Also, the mention of the teens, you gotta, throughout your report, you have a lot of opportunities for small businesses to probably get on board and help, you know, make this possible, and hire some people, and provide some incomes. I'd like to just make sure that we make sure, or you make sure, that everybody has an opportunity to participate in this. I'm not calling any names, but, you know, we know who does certain things in this town, but we also have a lot of people who lost their jobs that paid great incomes, that have now started small businesses that provide the same services. So I hope we'll do a good job at making sure that the communication gets out when you start this ball rolling, okay?
I think it's important that it stays a community effort.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Darwin?
I think everybody has made a, a great point in terms of what we're looking at here with this bid. First, I say I'm, I'm in, in support of, of, of this process and what we have coming forward with this. I think as you look around the state, around the region, and, and around the country, we're behind when it comes to other cities in looking at this. And I think, again, I think the timing is, is right for us to take a look at this. I think that we will be able, with the support of, of the partnership and others who've come to the table, to have a, a large majority of these individuals who'll be affected by this to be on board, and I think it takes us as a council to have the political will to, to do what we believe will be in the best interest of, of this city. And I think that if this happens and goes forward, I don't think any of us will have any regrets.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
I, I think from experience, if we go back and review our history, when we went downtown, started changing it, there were some small businesses who were moved out of business. And I don't think that you want to have that same experience. That's why when you market this, you need to make sure of how you're marketing it, because there have been some businesses that were not there, moved other businesses away from there, and there was a bitter feeling in this community about those small businesses. Now that you have, now that more businesses have been developed, then the approach you use will be most important, and how we address the issue. And I think one other thing I had on my piece of paper, I didn't say anything about it, was about the taxes also. When you start talking about the taxes, then you need to make sure that the businesses down there can clearly understand what kind of tax they're talking about, and then don't misunderstand things the city taxpayers, that they're gonna have to pay some more taxes. So it's, it's how you use this, what approach, because I think as we grow in this city, we're gonna have to embrace, we're gonna have to have partners to work with us, because we don't have all that in our budget to do the kinds of things, to make downtown and the areas real livable.
Okay, Carter?
Getting back to one point I made, I looked at it, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and wondered if, if that's too little to do what you want. So I, I think you gotta look at the numbers both, okay? Here's what the competition does, but then do it ground up, okay? I want so many people per day doing this or that, and add the numbers up that way and see how close they come.
Yes.
Thank you. But I like the plan, I think it's a good idea, and I think people paying specific money and getting very specific services for it, I think they'll appreciate that.
Mark, the presentation is nine-cent-parted presentation to the, to the property owners?
The nine cents, yes, ma'am. It's, it's what we've used so far in, when we've been talking to the, the major stakeholders in this. So they've seen the nine cents. My understanding of, of this process is that each year, it would need to be renewed through council. So if we started at nine cents, we could always increase it if the stakeholders decided that's something that they wanted. So that's, that's the real beauty of this system, is that this is a, this is an assessment in a district that's governed by the stakeholders that are within it. So if they say they want more services and they're willing to pay more assessment for it, then, then they have that ability.
And I'm delighted to hear the list of supporters. But in, in your conversations with different stakeholders, has there been one particular concern that's been raised, or?
Yeah, the, the, the one concern we've heard thus far is that, that this is a, this is a tax, but we've heard two. two. We've heard one minor concern, that this is a tax that will be ultimately pushed through to the leasing holders of these particular buildings, and it has the potential of pushing them somewhere else. So that's a concern. The other is that this is a tax, and there's going to be no value provided as part of it. And I think that is inherent on us to make sure those people understand that there is a value to this, and it's not just a tax for taxes' sake, and they will get 100 percent of the value for the money that they're putting in. So I think that is, that's our job, to make sure that all of the stakeholders understand the value they get for the assessment that they pay.
And just restated real easily, those that pay benefit.
Yes.
Because it is self-contained, it is earmarked for the bid district. The city couldn't come in at some point and say, ooh, we need that much. We need that someplace else, right? Because it is separate, it's almost like a fire district. It functions within its own parameters.
That's a great analogy, yes.
Just curiosity, what if someone says, uh-uh, I'm not going to have anything to do with this? Do you tax them anyway, or do you say, okay, then you don't get your street cleaned?
No. No, if, the way this would work, if you're within the district, you would be, and you're a tax-paying entity, then you would pay the tax. So there is the possibility, there could be people that would not be for it.
Questions or comments for Mark?
Mark, thank you. We appreciate it. Very good presentation.
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. City Manager, the next step is, clearly, we have some questions about kind of that next step. So I think what I heard, and we've got full council, with the exception of Councilmember Bessie, was support in taking this to the next step. And there are calendar issues with this that become somewhat interesting. Are they, do we need to?
There are several different options of how we can move forward. I think from what I've heard, I would suggest we bring back at least a preliminary report in the format of the way the final report would be next month. I believe Mr. Rouse has been working on that with his staff and with the partnership staff, so we could bring that in August, if council's ready, the committee's ready to look at some of the details on the budget and some of the other information.
Okay. So was that in agreement with what I heard?
I asked, is there a time-critical timeline here? Because I know taxes, if you got to go on a tax bill, you got to have it in August.
It just needs to be levied in time for next July. That's the only, you can only, you can enact it at any time, but it only takes effect at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Got you. So it would be next, July 14th, at least.
But I think a part of the time sensitivity is we have current commitments from various stakeholders in the bid district, that we need to treat those as time-sensitive. So we need to keep, is that right, Mark? Did you want to add something?
The other real time-sensitive issue is, once it's approved, assuming that it's approved, we would need time to bid out the services. So that also has to happen prior to July, so that when July rolls around, not only do we assess those folks, but we also start the services.
Good, thank you.
Okay, and let's see, Mark, you have the first in a series of public meetings, starting Wednesday, the 17th, at 6:00 p.m., Thursday, the 18th, at 2:00 p.m. at Aperture, is that right? And everybody's invited and encouraged, and no RSPP required. Okay, anything else for the good of the, no? All right. Mr. City Manager, any, all right, we're adjourned. Thank you.